No worries, I'm turning my camera off so I can shove food in my face and you don't have to watch me do it.
All right, well, we don't have the two Michaels yet. I have Michael DeChilla said she's traveling and I haven't heard from Michael. Um, so and Jim Woodall is not with us either. I'd hope to have him there to answer some more technical questions. But why don't we just have a nice conversation for as long as we want to see what we can iron out and see what kind of progress we can make and and maybe, maybe just assign some tasks for the interns. So I will call a meeting to order. This is October 25th, 2022. This is a working section of the Livingston zoning commission. And in attendance is Jim Berg, Deborah Monaghan, and Wendy Weaver. Right, thank you for coming. Um, so looking at the agenda, approval of minutes. Michael DeChilla's did send around minutes from last month from the October 11th meeting. And I noticed one error in there in terms of the, we looked at the sign code revisions and I had made a proposal to change change the wording in a couple of spots. And that's, and I, I don't know, maybe you can refresh my memory. Did we approve my suggestions or not?
Oh, I don't remember. We, I think we made motions to approve both sets of minutes.
Okay, I can, I guess I could go back to the audio tape and double check on that. If that's the case, then we will need to revise these minutes. And so I think what I'll do then, we'll just postpone accepting these minutes to the October 11th meeting. I'll double check on what exactly transpired. And we'll bring this up again at our next regular monthly meeting in November for approval. That sound like a plan?
Sure.
Great. Okay, um, then let me see, no public is with us today for public comments, no old business. And the new business is the Gateway Overlay Zoning District. And so I wanted to start off first working session by trying to look at the big picture, trying to look at what documents we have available to us. And then maybe make a plan for what part of it we should work on and in which order. Does that seem reasonable?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I felt like a lot, uh, last meeting, like, oh my gosh, where do we begin? So I think taking bite sized chunks feel are doable to me.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a big deal in conceptually to write up an overlay district ordinance. And it's also a hard deal in the sense that the, the areas that are in the overlay map are quite different from each other in terms of what's been built on them and their, in their uses and so then one of the questions is, is do, do we write something pretty general that applies to all three of them? Or do we figure out a way to have sort of separate overlay zone regulations for each of the three areas?
So I have, I have one question real quick. So the documents you sent us, Jim, the chapter 31 historic district overlay zoning.
Yeah.
That, okay, what is that document? Because it says historic district overlay zoning, chapter 31, but then the title under its gateway overlay zoning. So is that actually codified or is that already in place and we're changing that document? Or that's just a kind of a template that we're going to work off of? Or what is that?
Yeah, always when we have these meetings, I end up with too much paper. You can see I'm flashing around here.
A template for us to know how to approach creating an overlay zone. That was my understanding.
So this is probably just the, the historic overlay example and then we could go through and yeah, okay.
Okay, so what Jim Woodall has said a number of times to us is that the chapter 31 historic district overlay zoning could be used as just as a template in terms of its formatting. And so I included that in the package I sent to you. The other piece that I sent to you is the section 30.46 building design standards. And that is, I wanted to see Woodall on Monday and he, he showed me this. I had not actually even looked at this before. But at some time in the distant past, before my time, this had been written up and adopted by the city commission. And the idea being that this was a design review of, of any buildings that would be in these zones. It's very similar to what we were working on with large format retail.
Gotcha.
And so I, I see us as having three documents that we need to work on before we're all done. One is the map itself. Where exactly are the boundaries and where might we want to modify those boundaries? In other words, I don't know how long it's been since this was adopted, but there's been changes in those areas, development in those areas, annexations in those areas. So we possibly might want to recommend to the city commission that we change the boundaries of, of that of that map. And I think the way to do that, and I'd like to do it someday in person, but is to get down on a pretty granular level and look at those exact boundaries, what buildings, what businesses, what uses are in each one of them? And does that exact border reflect what our intent is? Well, that's a task, I think. It's kind of a second level task for us to do. Second task we have is this building design standards, which just says, okay, we've got these three areas, we've got stuff going on in each one of them. What do we want these areas to become? What, what is the purpose of a, a overlay zone of Livingston? So that's the second part. The third part then would be some of the stuff that's in the historic district overlay zoning ordinance, chapter 31. In other words, we have to write up, and maybe this is the first thing we need to start on, is purposes and intent. We have to write, we have to verbalize, why do we want these overlay zones? What, what purpose would they serve? What goals do we want to reach? And then there's a section after that territorial jurisdiction. So that mentions the map amendments to the mapping and some other kinds of things, season sort of things, permitted uses. You know, is there going to be a review board set up? Set up? In other words, if somebody wants to do a project in one of these zones, they have to submit separate documents to, to meet our requirements for building design, those kinds of things. And that has to be all reviewed. Who, who reviews that? And, and so that, you know, is that the staff that reviews it? Is it the zoning commission that reviews it? Or is it an independent board maybe that reviews that? We have to make those decisions and then write, write that all up. And then some stuff about a permitting procedure. So some of this is administrative, some of it is design standards and the third part would be the zoning map. So I, and the one thing that Jim said that a reason for doing them all to, and then submitting them to the city commission all at once is you don't get something out ahead of some other part. In other words, if you, if you adopt one thing and not the other, then somebody's going to be caught in limbo with those. But I think that's, that's a decision maybe that's down the road. What I think probably our first task would be personally is to work on the purposes and intent of having a gateway overlay district. What, what, what is the purpose of that overlay? What conditions exist now in those areas? What are the things you like and dislike about those areas? How do we coordinate what's going to go on in those areas with the growth plan? So that in my mind seems to be where we ought to start. Now, we may over time do some revisions on those purposes and intents, but we should have, I think in the very beginning, a pretty good idea of what, what we would like to see in those three areas. Does, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
And I'll just remind you that what I've said a number of times is it seemed to me like we had three zones in this. You know, that come off this map. One is the zone out past the hospital. One is a zone out by PFL. And one is the zone up by Albertson's. And they all sort of serve some common purposes, but then they all sort of have different characters too. And so that may be, you know, something to kind of keep in mind too. And I've got a couple of things to get it started, maybe. I've I mean, over the past two or three years, I've written up pages, you know, what, what are the goals of the gateway? And I looked through my folder and I found, I think, three different copies of this written in the last three years, and they're all very, very similar. I'm not coming up with kind of new, any new kind of ideas, but I'll, I'll, I'll kind of maybe read through this to you just to kind of get it started. And then and then we can go from there. So the goals of the gateway overlay, one is it would be really great to have attractive entrances to the town. That one of the dangers, of course, is, is business sprawl out on these three areas. So how could, how can we make the transition from the highways, from the freeways into town as a sort of attractive as possible? Now, that's maybe a goal for us as inhabitants of this town. It's, you know, it's, it would be nice to make it as, as nice as possible for us. But it would also, I think, potentially attract tourists into Livingston that, you know, we get about a million tourists coming off the interchange and then driving south to the park every summer. And I don't know, 95% of them don't stop in Livingston. They may get gas, they may go to Albertson's. They may go to Starbucks, but then they just kind of keep going. So for those in our community, the business people downtown, especially the extent to which we can sort of make that zone attractive. You know, welcoming, people come in, see Livingston, lots of places to go to, lots of things to do. You know, that could be a goal. You know, if you, if you're a person that is sick of the earth, you may, you may not want to do that. But we do have, I think, not a unanimity of opinion on that matter. And it might be a way to make our town more attractive at the same time as we make some of the business owners downtown happy. So making that entrance those three entries is more attractive, I think is important. I think the primary way you would do that would be landscaping and landscaping buffers between the road and any businesses. We've talked about that before. And some good signage might be a thing to do. In other words, welcome to Livingston. Home of the Park County Rangers or welcome to Livingston. Forty-seven art galleries, 300 restaurants, whatever. You know, just put up some nice signing that says, come in, join us, enjoy yourself. I think also, you know, bike and walking paths could be a part of that.
Jim, I'm just capturing, I have to have this written down in front of me. So I'm just, I just put on a edit mode in the Google Doc and I'm just trying to capture some of that stuff as you're talking about it and ideas that I have in my head to under the purpose and intent.
Sure. Sure. And then we can look at that later. Number two setbacks in parking and traffic and parking lots and all of that kind of stuff. We talked about that quite a bit when we were working on large format retail, but Park Street is a problem in my mind. It's our main artery through town. So it's absolutely essential, but at the same time, it's potentially a bottleneck. And, and then beyond that, it's it's, most of it is pretty ugly. I think it's just a haphazard development. There's a sort of a real lack of landscaping. There's a preponderance of parking lots adjacent to the roads. And so it seems to me we could visit with that topic and say, okay, well, what, how do we want to configure the areas just adjacent Park Street? You know, in terms of how they look visually. And then finally, there's some usage issues, which I'm not, I don't know whether, you know, in terms of residential multifamily motels. Do, you know, those are usage things and they normally would go just in the, in the zoning map. So we might want to think about how any residential areas would be included in those overlay areas. We typically, the way the ordinance is written up now, I think it's only going to apply to large format retail and to commercial. But I do know that that like, for instance, that area out past the hospital, there are people working on doing a pretty substantial development out there. Housing development. So in that area is in the overlay. And so we should sort of kind of think maybe more broadly about, well, where do we want people to live? How do we integrate housing in with, if, with, with these areas that are served for most traffic grown areas? So anyhow, that's kind of it. You know, there's a perennial audio auto issues. You know, the town is getting more and more strung out. We just got this one artery through town. And if you want to go from one store to the next store, you know, you're back, you're back and forth on Park Street a lot. So how do we avoid sprawl? How do we, how do we deal with traffic control, that sort of? Anyhow, that's my list. And I, you know, I don't know, at some point it would be kind of fun to all get in the car and drive around and talk.
You know, I like that idea. That would be good. It'd be great to do it on bikes, but not quite the season to do that on bikes.
That might even be better than, slower you go, slower you go, the more you see, that's for sure.
True. I agree with all of those things that you said, Jim. I feel like protecting scenic views and the character of the community is important.
Can you define characters of community?
I don't know. I mean rural, you know, rural mountain ag town, if I just wanted to kind of, you know, blankly put it out there, western. I don't know. I mean, I know that I love those entrances into town because they still feel open and spacious. At least two of them, not the third, not the one by Albertson's.
Yeah, well, we should write that down. I mean, I think you should, you know, there's a visual thing that, that I think is legitimate. It's a little hard to legislate on the visual appeal, but just because it's subjective, but.
Right. But it is part of our design building standards.
You know, just in terms of keeping, you know, for instance, you could say, okay, well, we have, when you pull off the freeway there at McDonald's and you're looking south, there's some immediate buildings that you can kind of see there, Albertson's and whatnot. But beyond that, there's a straight road and then there's the canyon. And then beyond that's the exorcist and then the sky beyond that. So there's, there's a view there. And one thing you might do is say we don't want tall buildings right up next to the road. In other words, we want to, we want to build lower buildings and push them out a bit such that the view is still there.
Right.
At the same time, I'm not that interested in looking at a parking lot.
Right, which we should also talk about. I would say parking lots and landscaping patterns. Interconnectivity, transportation. You know, I feel like everything should have a sidewalk.
Right. One of the things I've been.
Well, and I'm wondering, like, does it make more sense to have like a model that we apply? Like, I want to be careful of not reinventing the wheel. I mean, this has been done in so many different communities.
Yeah, Wendy, I emailed you a framework, actually both of you, I emailed a framework from another town that was really good.
No, I like that a lot. I, I just added a couple of those bullets into the document. But I'm wondering if, because like when you talk about complete streets, I mean, we could do complete streets or you remember when we got all the, oh, what was it? The Recovery Act? Funding that came in and all these communities in Montana got these big grants and they essentially redid their downtown areas and they had big white sidewalk or sidewalks with landscaping and a buffer and they had bulbs out so people could get across the street and they had nice lamps and lighting and it was a beautification. America, I forgot the Recovery Act name, but you can, it's, it's really evidence to see that in some of these downtown areas. And if we could apply that type of concept to the entry corridors, in addition to all the other things you said, that at least provides a standard like cross section of what's expected.
You know, you know, I'm not, I'm pretty good at reading a map and I can envision, you know, I can, I can envision a built environment off two, two dimensional drawing or a map. But I've also noticed that like especially landscape architects are so good at doing drawings of, of plans that are you know, they're colored in and they're, I don't know, they just look great and they, and they kind of get you excited about possibilities. And I don't know, Wendy, do you know any like good landscape people that could maybe would be helpful to sell this? Would it be helpful for us to envision it? And then it would be helpful for us to sell this to the city commission if we could have some drawings associated with what our ideas are.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even think we need to reinvent the wheel. Like even looking at the doc or the link that Deb sent, you know, with signage and I haven't gone through all of it, but I mean, can't we just somehow pick and choose ideas even? It's almost like this would be easier to do in a room with a bunch of whiteboards up and we like went and like, we're all like researching and we can print out different ideas and text and pictures and, and kind of create this like for the greens out there, it'll make them implode. But this visual of what we're, what we're envisioning and then try to put words around that and like capture the process of doing that and, and inviting the community, like inviting people to come like, hey, we're going to do a creative process. We're going to have, and we could keep it simple. It doesn't have to be like crazy. And invite people to come in and say, how do you want your, your entry corridors to look? Because if we do it that way, we're just greasing the skids. Not only to get people's input on what they think, but buy in once this starts to move somewhere.
Right.
I totally.
I'm, I'm just thinking like so many people have so many great ideas on this and instead of us trying to figure it out, why don't we maybe start there and get all this stuff to like, we just got this information from the community and now we're going to take it and put it into something to give to the commission.
Right. We could even put out like, can we put out a call to the public to bring visuals and information to a meeting?
Sure.
You know, the other part of that is I long wanted to have a day long session with the the parks and trails and the tree people and the planning people, you know, these various citizen boards that we have. They're, they're trying to solve the same problems we are. We all have our little silos and it would be really good for each one of our commissions to stand up and say, we've worked on this, this, and this is of the problems we see. This is what we would like, you know, and then just kind of use that as a, a way to get a kind of a unified approach to where we want to go. So that's.
We, we can come prepared, we can come prepared to do that too. I'm, I'm just wondering, like, I know, I don't know, what if we go to Jim and Faith and say, we want our next meeting to be this? And how can you help us put this together? And how can you help us put this together?
Well, I think, you know, we could also go to Melissa. You know, I think. I've talked to her a little bit, but I think this idea that I've had about. Getting all the commissions together, I think there's, she's supportive of it. I think the city commission is supportive of it and we just. We just need to kind of get that organized.
Yeah, I, I mean, I almost don't think we could go much further. I mean, I know this is kind of a shift or.
Change of tact.
But thank you. Think that would be a really great community experience and a way to engage at a level that. Honestly, I don't see happen too often.
Well, like the growth policy thing was actually.
That was great.
It was, you know, it still only represented one part of our community. But it was a big part. There was a unprecedented amount of of public engagement.
Yeah, in particular, if any of these areas will be, I don't know if any of them would. We would want to change them to mixed use zoning.
But that, something like that might come out of it, sure.
Right. And if I guess that the public's already involved at that point and thinking about visuals and what it looks like, then what's particularly a. Hot topic, maybe we'll have a little less. I don't know.
Yeah. I I I almost sort of think. That what, you know, Wendy, what you're talking about is a design charrette. That's the technical term out of architecture where. Where you have. Somebody leading this event oftentimes are like three days long and you bring in all the, the. People that are. affected by whatever the design issue is, you bring the public in. Uh, and you sit down and maybe you break into different groups and you just do tons and tons and tons of brainstorming. So that's kind of what I think you're. You're suggesting and I I I've. I did one one time. It was, it was. It was good, but it it depends on who shows up.
It does. I, and I think the hard part is getting a facilitator, which we would have to have someone kind of. Who has experience doing this and there's lots of people in the community that do. I don't think it would take that much work because we don't want to have preconceived. Ideas for this. We want, even if it's just words, people writing words down. And putting them on stickies and like there's different. Categories, transportation. Building standards, material, I know, whatever the categories are. And a little different than a design shirt, but yeah, along those lines of. Of doing that. And I I know people who do these things all the time, so we could. Reach out to them and ask, I don't know. Like tell Jim or whatever, this is what we want to do and. How can we make this happen? Or we go talk to Melissa and say, this is what we want to do. How can we make this happen? I'd be happy to, I mean, Katie. Weaver is a really good facility.
Do you know her?
I do. But you know, this is right up her alley and she, you know, would be really good and neutral. Uh, and that, you know, I think the city is used to seeing her. So I don't know. That's just an idea.
Yeah, no, 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 I I I think we should. I think we should do it myself.
We could, we can utilize existing networks, L bid. P C E P, anyone who's like gets things out to the community, we can say, hey, we're gonna. This is the date we're doing this, like envision our entry, our gateway corridors.
Yeah. Yeah, we probably, we probably should get all the business people that own property there too. Typically, they would say, well, well, it's all well and good, but you're, you're costing me money.
Right.
Yeah, and there's also, I'm sure there's people at M H U Architecture. That have done sure ads, you know, I don't know anybody personally that.
Well, I don't know if Ralph Johnson is doing this, but he's about the best you can find, but. I don't even know. I'm sure he's retired now, but. He was. He was pretty much. Heavily involved in all of the the growth stuff in Bozeman a few decades ago.
You know, I. I've lived in Bozeman. Around Bozeman for twenty years, built houses over there and then have been gone. We moved over here and moved to Seattle and came back and. So I wasn't around for. That big explosion uh in the nineties and the teens. But I did not, I did notice like on North Nineteenth. Yeah, there's a street that goes by Costco between Costco and Target. That's got a landscaping buffer on it. And then actually even. North Nineteenth on the west side of North Nineteenth. There is a tree buffer that they put in there. You know, a lot of times you're concentrating and driving, you don't notice things, but one day I get really, wow, this goes the whole length here. There's a lot of trees here and it, you know, it's kind, was kind of an amazing thing. And then I've also noticed on North Seven, way, way, way back when in the eighties, I was. In the Home Builders Association and I made a proposal to them. North Seventh was a wasteland and I said, we should. We should get all the businesses up and down our seventh to do landscape. And it would transform. That part of town and I couldn't get any buy in on it. But nowadays, when you go on our seventh. There's a lot more money around now and there's been a lot of new landscaping put in and I think.
And that was from a very strategic process that was done in the. Early two thousand, they got the businesses together and they, they literally designed that corridor. For when it had how to rejuvenate it. So that was all by design and all the businesses had a lot of way in and. What that cross section looked like and that could happen for Park Camp or for Park Street someday.
Yeah.
And it would be aw- awesome if it did.
You know, so that's, I guess that's why I brought this up is because. Maybe we can learn something from Bozeman, find out who over there. Knows about that and try to figure that out to say, well, here's a close example. You know, if you're doing, if you're trying to sell this as a concept to the public or to the business community. They, if you go over to Bozeman and you look at North Seventh. And if you think back in history, what it used to look like, what it looks like now, this was done. By the business community because it was good for their business. And so you could make that kind of an argument.
Deb, what were you gonna say?
I was just going to say um. That I would imagine it would take us a while to get this meeting put together. Right? Like if we're just thinking about timing. I mean. Even the earliest would be what December and that's the holidays.
That's, yeah.
So probably January, I guess. So I guess I was just thinking, because I love the idea, but I'm wondering, and then our planner is starting. November, right?
I think so, yeah.
So hopefully they would be excited. If maybe not capable.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a learning.
But I'm, I'm wondering if we should decide. If we were to go that route, if we should decide in the meantime specifically on the areas. So that that's decided upon for the public and not up for negotiation with the public.
Well, we can, we can decide on that. We can make our recommendation, the city commission has to. Vote, you know, discuss and vote on that to make it official.
Right, right. But I just mean even for the meetings themselves. I feel like the areas should be defined by us.
Make, yeah, I I I agree with that. And gives us something to focus on. I also don't think it's unrealistic. To do this meeting December thirteenth and if there's no turnout, we do another one, but I don't. See why we shouldn't shoot for doing something like this.
Cool.
A month, in a month and a half on the thirteenth.
We could also do a special meeting. Right? A week later or whatever.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to go a week later. You might want to check. Kind of some of the community calendars, you know, just to find out what else is going on because there's. All kinds of Christmas parties that pop up. You know, it does get hard.
Um, well, should we? Assign tasks for this to try to get it moving? What's the best?
What would that be?
Um, well, I can see one task. One task is, is it like a mapping exercise? The the maps, I I've, I've got. I found this map somewhere. And then I've got the map out of the growth policy, which is totally crude. Um, but I'm, I guess I'm wondering if I went into the G I S office, whether the. There's something much more precise that. Um, they could, they could give us.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
So far.
So maybe you could take that, Jim, and follow up on it. And then I envision like reaching out to Jim Woodhall. And the commission to run this idea by them. And I envision that happening sooner than later and I don't mind doing that or. And then I think we need to think about. Reaching out to get. A facilitator and a location and a date, like some of the details. If the commission and or. Jim is interested. And supportive of this idea.
Yeah, I I think it's a kind of. That funny little time in the city. Um. You know, we lost the, we lost the manager, city manager and they're trying to pick a new one now and it. It it felt like Jim would all was. Um. I I think Cardos was driving the planning department. Toward what his, he saw as his vision. And I think now that he's, Cardos is not there, that. Woodhall is a little more open and flexible to. Uh. To ideas. So it might be a good time to talk to him and see what. What he thinks about it.
So maybe, Jimmy, you could talk to Jim and then I could call Melissa and talk to her. And then try to circle around with what we find.
Uh. Yeah. I think that's good. Um.
I'd like to get in touch with that town. The link that I sent you, get in touch with that town and just see if there's anyone I can talk to about how they did it and what their process was like. Just kind of information gathering.
That would be great. It would be awesome if we could get a couple people. That have gone through that or involved, like doing it right to kind of be. Advocates or help support this.
Wendy, do you, could you find out who in Bozeman might be worth talking to about what happened on North Seven?
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah, I'll look into that.
You don't really have any contacts over there.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Um, so Deborah, I, just as a suggestion, if you want to follow up on. That place you found, you might also spend some time checking other places out too. You might, you know, you might, that was, I think in South Carolina or something.
Georgia, I think, yeah.
Place, yeah, you you might. Look at. Either the Canadian Rockies or the Northern Rockies, other towns. That are experiencing. High levels of development. And see if you can come up with. Some other examples. And of course, visuals are terrific, either, either in terms of illustrated maps. Or photographs.
Right.
And of course, my big idea about all of this is to. Landscape the whole length of Park County, including the remote side.
You're so self centered and absorbed, Jim. I can't believe that's like your only. Goal.
That's my only goal.
You're so self centered. All about you and green, prettiest places in our town.
No, it's not my only goal, but it's my hardest goal. But I, you know, that would be nice to, you know, if we could. But that's something that would be years in the making and you would have to get all of the big players on board with it. And just to kind of, kind of work, work things out, negotiate stuff out. Anyhow. Um, that's good. Anything else? What, what? We should have a little report that we give to the two Michaels about what we have been talking about so that they are on board. Um. Maybe I'll send the email to them.
Can we send them the audio from the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm sure they'll.
They'll love that.
Sure.
I'll send them a note on the email.
Okay.
Um. And then of these other sort of tasks that I talked about in terms of. Provisions, you know, I sent you around the Google, the Google Docs. Um. In the meantime, is that something we should sort of back away at? Um.
It seems like it. It seems like we should have its purpose lined out for the meeting, right?
Yeah. We didn't get too far on that, but um, I, I was kind of struggling. Let me, I'm gonna go here. When you go to Google Docs.
And we probably need to pull from the growth policy as much as possible. Is that true?
Like, yeah, because I think there's a lot of language in there like that defines when you're asking about, well, what's a. Maintaining the character. I think that a lot of that was flushed out, so we can pull right from that.
I think in terms of. Or purpose and intent. I I.
Yeah.
We definitely need to reference to that stuff. And you know, as part of our justification for what we're.
Right.
Yep.
Transportation, interconnectivity. I imagine that language is all in there. And landscaping would probably fall under character. Somehow, I'm guessing.
So I don't know which one of you two knows Google Docs that well. What's the way, when you pull up one of those documents I sent around? What's the way to sort of add comments? To stuff or. You know how you can edit Word documents and you can do strikeouts or.
So I would, for this, Jim, it's pretty straightforward since we're going off stuff like all the language in this. For example, the overlay zoning document. Is, has nothing to do with the overlay. It's all historic.
Yeah.
I just put that into editing mode. So literally going through. And you can see under purpose and intent, I just put some bullets in there, but you can just start typing away. And deleting what you want, because a lot of this, other than like the. The template is really not the same, so.
So I guess that's what I didn't, that's what I didn't know how to do is how to put it in editing mode.
Yeah, so you can see, if you go in there, you can see, you know, uh. You can just start typing stuff.
Does it, does it, does it put your initials or something?
Nope. So are you in there right now? Just go up to the top. Are you in there right now, just go up to the top?
I mean, in chapter thirty one, history, historic district overlay, Doc X, yes.
Yeah, so now, look, look down be below section thirty one point O two, I'm gonna. I'm typing in there, can you see me typing?
I see what you, oh, I see, and then, okay.
So you can just start typing in here and it's gonna just save, I mean, if you wanted, all three of us could be working in this and it's just gonna start.
With crazy, yeah, okay.
Adding stuff in there as long as we're not typing over one another and trying to delete, so.
Yeah, that's good.
So, yeah, I mean, this is helpful in having like sections.
Do I need to, let me see. Do I need to put it in editing mode too?
Yeah, if you click on editing and just put, if it's not, or if it's in suggesting, put it to editing.
I'm not finding that.
So up in the very far right hand corner, there's a light blue box. With the little down arrow.
Okay, got it.
So what does that say?
All right. It says, I can edit, okay.
Yeah, and then, what, like, the bubbles up above that, that tells you who's in there, so like if Deb was starting to type. It would show her name or like I can see you jumping around with your name and so. Anyway, we can just use this as kind of like a starting point, if this is all. You know, if we don't need in this, we could delete it, I'll undo that, just to keep it there, but.
No, this is good, let's keep this down. All right, I'm not, I pushed the editing thing. But it's not allowing me to.
Just type something in there.
I mean, I can see all your changes.
Yeah, I don't know, without looking at it, you should be able to, especially since you're on here. Are you in viewing mode? It has to say editing, there's three modes, editing, suggesting and viewing.
Yes, I'm in the editing mode, my bubble is not. Up there.
Are you signed in? It shows you're in there on mine.
Okay. All right.
I don't know why it's not working.
Okay. I'll settle with it. Okay, well, I think that's a plan. Anything else we need to kind of do before. Our regular meeting in two weeks? We'll, we'll talk to Jim Woodall, we'll talk to Melissa. Try to flesh out somebody to be a facilitator and try to. Figure out a date and a place. To do a public meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, you may, I don't know what kind of advertising you would wanna do, whether we would put something. It's a public meeting, does it go in the newspapers, a notice? Um, and then just send around. On various lists, I guess. They probably, the city probably has some big lists from all, all the people that participated in the growth policy. That would be a good place to start.
Okay, well, yeah, so I guess we can come back at the next meeting and just share what we've learned and.
Yeah.
This is a worthwhile meeting.
I thought so. Yeah, the three of us were the top of the pile here for sure. We know.
I don't know about that.
Depends on the day.
Awesome, well, thanks for putting together, Jim, and, uh, yeah, we'll see you, I guess, in a few weeks.
Perfect, good.
Right.
Bye, Deborah.
Bye.
Thanks.